Good evening. It's my pleasure to call this September 12th Dayton Town Council meeting to order. At six o'clock, I'd like to remind everybody, there's a sign in sheet at the door, which I now have. It's for anybody else who needs to sign up this evening. Thank you very much. We will not be taking any comments via Zoom. Pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3708.2 and the town's resolution, authorizing electronic participation at town meetings, Ms. Hoover is joining us via Zoom tonight from her home due to medical reasons. Are you with us, Ms. Hoover?
I am here.
Wonderful. Could I have a roll call, please, Ms. Hall?
Yes, Ms. Mathias. Ms. Esther. Mr. Walls. Mr. Dijack.
Present.
Mr. Seward. Ms. Hoover.
Here.
Mayor Jackson.
Present. Heavenly Father, we pray for the people of Ukraine as they continue the war in their country. We ask for compassion, strength, and wisdom to guide world leaders. We ask for protection for our first responders and many women of the military who protect our great nation. We ask this in your name. Amen. If you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is banned. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the minutes for the regular council meeting of August 8th, 2022. Thank you. Bob, do I have a second? Emily, thank you, Ms. Estes. We have an amendments to the meeting or to the minutes. Roll call, please, Ms. Hall.
All right, Mr. Walls. Ms. Esther. Ms. Mathias.
Hi.
Mr. Seward.
Hi.
Mr. Dijack.
Hi.
Ms. Hoover.
Hi.
Mayor Jackson.
Hi. We have no action items this evening, so we'll move on to public comments. And Mr. Knox, you step forward. You state your address and.
Thank you. I'm welcome, Alex. Please report. And I'm representing the state of Virginia, I think. And we're concerned about our water. For last 22 months. Our water bill usage has been lower than 300 pounds per month. This time it was 23,000. Very unpredictable. 300, 1,000, 4,000, 23,000. We've been searching, searching, trying to figure out what's wrong. Many reasons why we might be in trouble. And I know which will modify the water bill.
And during this section, you know, we take public comments. We don't necessarily respond to those comments because, you know, we're not the experts on, you know, the water usage.
I've been in contact with the department of 50 days of the company. For those of you who are just behind it. They couldn't be 300, they couldn't be 23,000. Yeah, it's been 22 months. 32 steps. And the standard deviation is around 6,000. That says we're good. I was 3,000 a month. 9,000. Very. A budget increase. We don't know what it pays for 3,000 a month or 200 a month.
Thank you. All right. And then we also have not this necessarily a public comment, but have any of you noticed the sunflowers that are down? So we've had several residents who have called and wrote in about the generosity of Mr. Kudler for putting those out. So I just wanted to recognize him for the things that he does, not only to help out the town, but to beautify the town as well. All right, we'll start with staff reports with Ms. Lawrence.
Thank you. My staff report begins on page eight. If you have any questions, let me know. I will highlight a couple of things under the water plant upgrade. We had gone to to infrastructure and I've talked with finance committee members. We are going to have another change order. Recall, we have done last month, the pipes were much deeper than we anticipated and that our plan showed in one area. And then the pipes were in a different place than what our plans was the last time we did the plant show. Which means that they have to move a box over. So the first change order was 17,000 and they're going to add to that once we figure out where the box is going to be used. Rather than do and one change order tonight and one next month, or they're going to combine them and give you final numbers before next month. It's still well within the amount of money that we budgeted, but I just wanted to make you aware that the change order should slow down. We've really only had this to be two. They should check, slow down once we get past the finding things underground stage. The equipment is ready to be shipped. It's going to be shipped in three or four weeks. And then do you want to pull that up now or you want me to do it during the water report? You've probably noticed we, the building is going up rather quickly. There it is. Yeah, we met with with our project update last week. We were hoping to have the roof uncovered by the end of this week. It was uncovered by Saturday. The other, the missing stone work was what we did the change order on and it's still going to be put on now that the roof is up. The shingles will be by the end of the week. You can see they're getting ready to pour the concrete inside. They've got to dig a little bit around still before they can finish on the concrete, but it should be ready to roll here pretty soon. And I'll start getting all the pipes in so that when the equipment gets here, we start installing.
That angle makes it look like a tiny little.
I know. It's really big. It does look like, I know, I was looking at it, so it's like a shed. But if you've been there, can you zoom out a little bit, Krista? In comparison to the other, it still looks small. But anyway. Yeah, if you look at the shed beside it, yeah. Yeah. Right. Yeah. So anyway, things are moving along. It's been remarkably going remarkably well. I would talk to Russell came by today and said they have a project in Old Vista that I think went to bed before ours and they haven't even started. I will give Waco kudos for not having the supply chain issues with a lot of other companies. So far, we haven't been held up because of supply chain at all. So that's nice. Anyway, we do our monthly progress meetings with the engineering contractor and the staff from the water plant, Adam. I think that's it for my report unless you have some questions. I will address the Church of Brethren. Wendy has talked with him several times, given him that information. After I talked with them, Wendy ran more extensive reports because they were concerned that it was when we changed the radial read, although just for council's information, if we get a high read before we ever send out the bill, Jennifer goes out and does manual, make sure that our machine picked it up correctly. Over the past six to 10 years, even before we had a radial read, they had a couple of months every year that was pretty high up. So after their high bill came at the 23,000, then the next month it was lower than the normal. So, but then it did go back up. So what we think might be going on is maybe a seal in the toilet isn't seeming right. The last person who flushes on the Sunday, it doesn't stick. And then until somebody comes in the next, flushes again, it might be running that whole time. It's hard to believe that could be 23,000, you know, but it's going to be a response. So I'll let Susan add anything during her report if she has anything. Capital projects are moving along. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. And we'll go to Ms. Smith for treasures report.
Mayor and council, I have nothing else to add to the report that you received and the financials there, and I will confer with what Ms. Lawrence said as far as the leaky toilets can be havoc.
Yes, thank you.
So I don't know if that's what it is, but it sure seems like.
And information for all of you who want to know if you have a leaky toilet, put food coloring in the tank. If it goes into the bowl, that color, then you have a leaky toilet. That's how you find that out.
Correct. I'll let them know. Everybody will have seen the bowls next month.
And we have chief as a way for training, Lieutenant Hooker is a way for training. So we are blessed to have Officer Dean Roadcap. So please have many questions for him this evening. Now, I will let you know the, the last time that we, the first time that Lieutenant Hooker was in here, he was like a run show model and gave us some stuff. So you got to get a little bit to live up to.
I know you, I know you find that hard to believe.
Um, the chief's, uh, chief's reports on page 12. You have any questions against either give it to me or I can give them to him.
If I could, if I could add.
I was going to ask you.
I seem to run into, I'm sorry, Roadcap more often in the community. I never see him in the building, but I do see him out talking to business owners and, and community members quite often, or sometimes going in in mini mart to get his monster or whatever it is. But I ran into him again at the market last week and everybody there was giving him huge kudos. They had had a shop lifter and then shops, some of the shops have cameras. One of the business owners had, well, several business owners had reviewed the cameras over and over again. One finally found a suspect. Somehow DJ already had the license plate and Officer Roadcap worked with the sheriff's office, the deputy, and they went out and recovered it all. Stolen goods from that time. It's somebody who has this habit, I guess. Anyway. Wanted to give him kudos. The businesses were very, very thankful and complimentary. We've interviewed two people. We haven't made an offer. The chief was out of town last week and again this week. That position is still open right now. So now if anybody to certify, send them our way. And that contract has been, all that has been taken care of. So nothing outstanding on that.
Thank you. Also, Roadcap. All right, Ms. Lawrence for Public Works.
Okay, the Public Works report with the lovely fire hydrant graphic is on page 13. And they, I, Adam always has like four bullets and, you know, they're working their tail off. They, but I will say, this month has been great. I have had people who have come into the office to compliment, said, park their car, walk into the office to compliment staff on the way to 42. I had somebody who got on the website, found my email and sent me an email on the work that Adam had done with this sewer liner repair, the second bullet. People have gone out of their way to say thank you to the staff or to compliment them, which to me says a lot for somebody to take the time to either come in here or to find somebody's email. So they're represented as well, I think, out of the community, or I know out of the community. So anyway, the item for consideration, if you don't, anybody have questions on the report itself. So items for consideration is that this, there's something wrong with the heat pump. As you know, a couple of months ago, we had some issues or something wrong with the heat pump. Not so much this month. Although I think it's warm in here, but everybody else thinks it's cold. But when winter comes, it's not going to work. So we got bids. Well, we have a bid. The standard heat pump would be $10,368. If you want the variable speed air handler and wifi enabled energy star thermostat, that would be 16,000. What the structure is, it's happy to go with the standard 10,368 unless we get a lower bid. That's from the company that maintains all of our accounts. We did have a conversation with both finance and infrastructure, I believe, and that we need to start adding a replacement in the CIP because these are all the same age. The building was built in 2007. So we're going to start seeing that one more. So I would ask for consideration to pay for that out of contingency funds for public works. That's 25,000 in the budget. And in addition, recall that the water department got a new truck at the beginning of this year or this fiscal year, and they need a mount and a snowplow out of that front so that we can use it. It will come out of the public works budget because snowplowing is public works and we get reimbursed by Vito. But that would be the last time we got one. It was 18,390 to have everything installed on it, the lights and all that, the mount, the snowplow. So I'm asking that we, and both of those prices may go up slightly, you know, so I'm just asking that no more than 20,000 that we've used contingency for the snowplow and mount in the
Heat pump not exceed what?
Uh, well, the combined not to exceed 20,000. We have 25 in the budget. The heat pump right now, we believe it's 10,368. The snowplow and mount would be 8,390. Which would be 818,758 altogether. I don't know if you want to stick with that number out of contingency. I rounded up to 20,000.
I like that.
The way things are going to be in this test.
And anything.
The air handler quote expired a couple of days ago. So we have ordered stuff and the price has gone up after we've ordered it. So I won't have to come back to you if you say up to 20,000. So.
I need a motion to utilize contingency funding up to $20,000 to replace the heat pump in the council chambers and to purchase snowplow and mount to be used on the water department's new truck. Robert. Second, Mr. Seward. We got Bob and Rob. And roll call, please, Ms. Hall.
All right, Mr. Seward. Ms. Mathias.
Hi.
Ms. Estes. Ms. Hoover.
Hi.
Mr. Walls. Mr. Dijack.
Hi.
Mayor Jackson.
Hi. Motion passes. And then we'll go back to Ms. Lawrence for water department.
All right, the water department report is on page 14. You can see we purchased no water from the community last month. We will be purchasing water as we move forward. There's one day that we're going to have to not use our water. They'll apply from the county office, which is on. Um, the water department's been helping Public Works on all the projects that they've been working on as well as doing some of this other stuff. Jennifer did go to the, I think it's the first time ever, Virginia Rural Water Association Leadership Symposium. Anyway, are there any questions on that report before I ask for, I don't know, for consideration? Um, so we've already done the snowplow. Which came out of Public Works, but I would like to ask for us to use the water and sewer contingency funds. Uh, you may recall last month, I said that we had to replace a pump over at the water plant. That's real important. That was 9,360 and we were just going to take it out of their equipment budget. And you guys were going to remember that at the end of the year, my native using contingency. But then we got the installation quote for a heat pump. And that's $50,700. So together, they're just over 25,000. So I would like you to authorize us to use the full $25,000. Susan and I will figure out what to do with the other 60. The pump and this is a company. It's like, sorry, we're originally told just to be cheaper to buy the pump somewhere else and they can install it. We need to get a couple more bids as per our policy.
All right. So I need a motion to utilize the $25,000 contingency funding for the purchase and installation of a pump at the water treatment plant. Estes, so a second?
Second.
Wow, man, you got it, Susan.
Okay, I'm feeling. We'll work on that here.
Roll call, Ms. Hall.
All right, Mr. Walls. Ms. Esther. Ms. Mathias.
Hi.
Mr. Seward.
Hi.
Ms. Hoover.
Hi.
Mr. Dijack.
Hi.
Mayor Jackson.
Hi. Motion passes. And now we'll.
Yes, I will. We, we will definitely put that out.
And Ms. Hall for community development.
My very lengthy report is on page 15.
Killing trees.
Lots of things that may be coming up in the near future, but nothing quite yet, other than we will need to appoint a maybe VA member. They're on the stepping out of pages for that up through September and get with you all on it. And that's all I have. Unless anyone has any questions.
And Ms. Lawrence for economic development.
Sure. The economic development report starts on page 16. We've got a visual aid tonight. As you may know, well, as, as you know, we had a video produced. We have a 30 second video here after Dayton Days. They're going to shoot some more, a week of Dayton Days and get some more businesses in as well. And then it will have a two minute video, but right now we have a 30 minute video. It's already been sent to Massanut and it's being used at Massanut and it's already on the TV screen at the Dayton Market and has been very well received in. Emily went out of her way to call in and let me know that. And are we going to be able to pull it up?
Ready?
30 seconds. 30 seconds. Ms. Lawrence.
Yeah, there's a lot of footage obviously that they shot that can't fit in the, I guess, 44 second video, but they're going to add some more to the longer video and we're just finding some other markets besides Massanut and this market obviously is on our Facebook page. Hi, any question? Shout out to Maggie for a fine job on the Muddler, working as a team with the police department, Public Works and everybody else. Fine event, fine consuming, fine event, excellent event. Dayton Days is full. We have at least 15 vendors on the waiting list, although with COVID, we've already had a couple who have had to back out. So we may be able to give everybody a space, but we don't know. But it looks to be a huge, we have never filled up as early as we have for Dayton Days before. We have some past vendors who waited too long, thinking they could get in and they're on the waiting list now. We did have to cancel the concert on Saturday night because of the weather. And just highlight, drives me crazy that the bushes outside need to be trimmed, but we have, uh, I think six groups of 20, 10 to 20 kids coming over from Turner Ashby next week and they needed projects to be, so they'll be washing vehicles. They'll be trimming bushes and meeting and things like that. So you've just got to be patient for another week so that we have enough work. Some will be down. Actually, we reached out to some of the nonprofit. So I think some are working at Silver Lake Mill and some are working at Fort Harrison. We have some that'll be doing the landscaping and decorating and stuff for us and pulling all the summer flowers out so that we can put the fall flowers. There you go. Any other, oh, that, sorry, the Christmas parade is going to have to be moved. Turner Ashby's marching band cannot do this Saturday that we've scheduled. This is several years in a row that they've had district, last year they had district by Zoom, so we could go ahead and keep it. They're going to be in person this year. So we've asked and I don't think we've heard back yet for the following, so Friday. Yes, I think on the time. We will let you know as soon as we know that, but I know we cannot have a holiday parade without Turner Ashby's marching band. So we will let everybody know. That's the only thing, the only thing it's been printed on is that part that we sent out in the spring and we'll just probably send out another part to let everybody know. What's that?
Downtown merchants are doing that.
We did run out. We, Harrisonburg is going to have their parade. Bridgewater is going to have their parade. So we likely will not have nearly as many as we had last year. Last year was in a nominally because neither of those localities had their parade, but we are prepared for now that people came to ours for, for them. But probably not the same numbers. But yes. But yes, if the downtown merchants offer is still good, we will take their, their candy as well. Although we would encourage the downtown merchants to do their own foot and do their own kid. That would be, get them some. One other thing that wasn't, I think in Maggie's report yet, but she has started using Instagram more. So so, yeah, there aren't very many people connected with us on Instagram. It's discovered Dayton VA is the Instagram. We have several pages that were started years ago and we have no way to stop them. We can't get the password. We, they were sent to somebody else who's an email. So it's discovered Dayton VA and she's been highlighting that. It's going well. That's what we're using to just kind of promote the town, not get out messages. And then finally, speaking of getting out messages for the second month in a row, and the second month we were getting streets. We're pushing street sweeping back one day and it won't be until Wednesday because they're midway through that sidewalk project that they need all hands on deck. The concrete is supposed to start getting poured out. So Wednesday, and we did send out a notice to the businesses today and we changed Facebook and sent out a word on the website by people. I believe those are all the reports I'm responsible for.
Mr. Bo.
I have nothing to report.
We love to hear that. And for those, he's our legal counsel. So when he talks, it usually costs us money. So we like.
As I said, we believe this is the calm before the storm. So good, good job on these short meeting selections.
All right, now we'll start with our committee report, starting with Mr. Dijack for economic.
Yes, sir. Yes, we did meet August 11th, just after the last council meeting, covered a lot, actually covered the, the video and some marketing and of course, uh, Dayton Days and downtown revitalization were also on the list. So that's exciting. Dayton Days, hard to believe we're met weeks now. So it was a great day after revitalization. Kudos to staff for continuing to lead the charge there and had a good turnout at Sunset Park. Um, and we'll be continuing that meeting with the project team later this week and I think including some of our early analysis at the end of the month. So that'll be great. That for, for the students benefit here, that's where the town was awarded a, a grant to do with downtown revitalization program. So this is the first phase of studying and then, then we might end up So this is the first phase of studying and then then we might be in line for funding to actually do some of the improvements and planning in downtown. So everything from beautification to, you know, helping marketing and everything in between. And of course, we've been coupling that with, you know, you'll probably seen, you know, our, so start seeing wayfinding signs and, you know, and the like. You can, of course. We always love to do our plans downtown, but anyway, so you'll see little things here and there. So. So I mean, that's, that's exciting. And again, thanks to Angela, Maggie, Krista and everyone else to get that. That's, this is pretty exciting and people are tuning in. So, and Maggie for. I know highlighting the best of the valley winners. On Facebook and that was impressive. It's pretty exciting that we had such a good showing. Good there.
We want you to continue with finance.
I will. And this one is short. This Lawrence addressed the water treatment plant. The items, so nothing to report.
Beautiful. Mr. Seward, infrastructure.
Ms. Lawrence addressed the pump and the change order for the water treatment plant, so.
Parks, recreation and beautification.
We met the second for that. We ought to. Parks, shelters that don't have anything for this month, which should go back up next month.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Mathias for personnel. I think everybody's been made aware of that. And Ms. Hoover, could we have a police report?
Sure. We met on September 2nd. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We met on September 2nd, discussed the search for an officer. And then also talked about the ongoing accreditation and grant work that Chief Trout is is doing. That's allowed us to make a lot of improvements within the team and further the officers training. So good meeting on the 2nd and also just wanted to shout out again National Night Out, which which happened in August. This past month and the great work that the officers and the rest of the town staff did at that event.
Thank you, Ms. Hoover. So now to give you guys a little bit of having. Action items tonight. And generally, when an action item comes about, it's something that we have to make, take action on as a council. So we didn't have any of that tonight. We did during the reports have a couple of things that came up for consideration. And then we decided to take action on those things. We didn't necessarily have to, but are things that we needed to address. So we took action on those. And then we went around to each of the departments and the staff gives their reports. Most of the staff, you know, doesn't come in here for the report and that's why you hear Ms. Lawrence. Do most of those reports and committees for the council. So that's what you heard, the committee reports. Not all of the committees meet every month. And what they do is when we do meet, we'll have discussion and then the committee will make recommendations to the council. And then the council, excuse me, council will act on those recommendations. And then staff also has a lot of input in those recommendations as well. Do you have any questions about any of that? And sir, I don't know if they told you, but as I said at the beginning, the last person that came in was going to have to come up and give a dissertation on what you're learning in class. Yeah, I see. Every time I do that, I get the same look. Thanks for coming in. I'll sign your papers since we're finished. Now, now we're at the point where we have council and mayor. Comments and as most people know, yesterday was 9/11. And I was at a function yesterday morning and it was a rather large function. And I was shocked that when, and they were doing their opening comments, no mention of 9/11 came up. And so when I left there and then I went to work, I was talking to my staff about it and one of them said, oh, it's today, 9/11? I think, yeah, September 11. One of my other staff members said, well, you know, I think people are just trying to forget that. And so I'm hoping that we lost 2,996 people on that day, which changed our world forever. I mean, things have changed dramatically overnight when that happens. So when I hear young people tell me, well, we, people just want to forget. That I'm hoping that that is not the case because even on social media, I asked, you know, friends and stuff. They said, there just wasn't as much on social media this year as there has been the past. So hopefully we do keep that, you know, up, you know, when September comes around, you still see the specials and stuff. But I mean, it was a huge date and anybody that was, you know, an adult during that time, you know where you were when they hit. I know, you know, anybody that I talk to knows exactly where they were when they found out what was going on. So I ask everybody to to keep that in your brains when the begins. September rolls around every year. And then we also, this is National Suicide Prevention Week, is National Suicide Month. So again, it's something that affects so many people and Mr. Dijack is going to speak on that.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mary Jackson. Yeah, and just, you know, I I think it's just another point to, you know, not to be too solid today, but I think it is something to take. You know, take notice of and and really, I think, if nothing else, for National Suicide Prevention Month, then also National Recovery Month too, which I think kind of play, you know, hand in hand in some. Issues. Again, mental health, I think we're starting to become much more aware of that, but I think. It's, it's important to take time to reflect on those who, you know, came out last. Year and mentioned that, you know, shared a personal story. Unfortunately, lost my brother. To that when he was just after, you know, so that that certainly resonates with my family. But it's one of those things where we try to, you know, remember and reflect, but also be able to just lend a hand and and adhere to your, your friends, your family, your neighbors. You never know who's going through tough times and, you know, it's, it's indiscriminate. And I think that's really the thing that, you know, it kind of humbles you that it can happen at anywhere, anywhere, anytime. And it's just, you know, a hug, a handshake, you know, friendly gesture goes a long way, just de-stigmatizing it, knowing that everyone is going through. It has some type of, you know, emotional situation and baggage and just being there, a good neighbor, a good friend. And I think that's, if nothing else, I would just encourage everyone there, make sure you let your friends and family know they're not a burden. If they come to you, you're there for them. And and I just wanted to share that and, you know, and I know too, we, and I give our credit to our police as well for going through and having to. Going through those situations too and having to navigate that. And that's, that's a burden to put on too. So just knowing that, you know, we're all here in this together. So, so I just say, let's try to compassion contrive from the face of someone's darkest days. So let's take that approach.
Thank you, Mr. Dijack. Any other council comments? We have no unfinished business? Do we have any new business? All right, Ms. Estes, it's that time in the evening where I need a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No, there's never any opposed. Meeting adjourned. Now, I will say this is the first time ever that we have had students at this early in.